Good evening, everyone. It's time to call to order our regularly scheduled April eleventh monthly board meeting. Good evening. It's great to see everyone on this rainy afternoon. Seems like our last meeting happened as well. So that's always what happens when the seasons get to change, so. Happy about that. I'm hoping that folks had a chance to review the agenda that Crystal distributed earlier in the week. The entertainment motion for the approval of the agenda.
So.
And their support. I've been moved and seconded that we will approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion?
Yeah, yes. I'd like to add two things. I'd like to add to the subcommittee updates master plan. I'd like to add Michigan class to unfinished business.
You have a discussion. All right. Seeing done, all those in favor of approving the agenda with the modifications indicated, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. That will move us on to the minutes, and we have copies of the March minutes for review. These were also distributed earlier in the week. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the March meetings.
I wrote them down. Option. Um, I'll sign it.
And seconded. All right, discussion.
Yes, I'd like to add master plan to subcommittee up since I spoke.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
Sorry.
Did you want to talk to him?
Here, right here. What were on minutes of the meeting, right here?
Right, but I had, but there was a.
It was last time.
Yeah, but that was.
We're proving.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Uh, any other corrections? I see none. All those in favor, but if you know by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, well, she asked the one that's mentioned, right?
But what I had meant to say, I'm sorry, was that I had asked for it to be added to the agenda. Last and.
During the March meeting?
During the March.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you mean. Kathy, so, okay, yes, all right, Jim, can you catch it? That's clear. No, I, I, I didn't catch that. Thank you, Kathy. All right, that will take us to the treasurer's report. So Kathy, I will give you the floor.
Okay, um, I move the board approved to March two thousand twenty-four operating fields total. Four hundred five thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Seconding. Who was that?
We moved and seconded, uh, that will be approved expenditures in the amount of four hundred five thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Any discussion? Uh, say, Kathy, myself, Kelly are all in an approval came to these expenditures every month. Um, and we do, um, get a lot of proactive messaging from the team here lately, um, Ashley, about expenditures and things that would call our attention, so I appreciate that. Just a note for her.
Just a quick question. They keep starting to, um, love. Is that typical locally?
That's actually going to be built to the Friends for the sponsorship of their greater film festival yet.
Questions? Yeah. No further questions? Um, all those in favor, but if you know by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, here it is.
Um, I move to receive and file the financial reports.
Okay. It's been moved to probably second that and receive and file the financial reports. Any discussion? I see none. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Kathy, any other items for the treasurer's report? It's time. All right, thank you very much. All right, with that, I will turn it over to Stacy for our friends at the library report. Good evening.
Thanks for being here. So I just wanted to report out on our very successful fundraising weekend, um, this last Friday through Sunday. Uh, we grossed almost seven thousand total with, um, about one thousand coming from the odds and ends art auction, which was Gillian's brain title. It brought in, um, well, it got rid of a lot of the art, all the art really, some of it's in my house, but that's okay. And, uh, it brought in a, a, a really, uh, great target audience. Uh, it was a twenty-one and over event, and Gillian did an excellent job in getting that special liquor license, so everybody was really happy. And I do have a new favorite wine. It's Trader Joe's Fruit Rosé, and it will be making an appearance at the gala.
Along with the red one, greeted or red it or.
Well, red, well, red. They're out of stock on it, so I'm gonna have to make sure.
So did you sell the, um, Robert Rockwell?
Oh, we sold all of them too.
Oh, I'm so happy. Yeah, that went to good.
And I lost all. I just didn't have any room for them. And we sold the giant, uh, boat model to a gentleman who was so excited to have it. Yeah.
What average about? How much did you get per piece? I was curious.
Uh, we made most of them more than ten, except for those three that I.
Thirty-four goes into six hundred and twenty-three how many times, and that's how much we made. Um.
The highest, uh, bidded piece was a hundred dollars.
Is that the incredibly intricate train? Yeah.
Nice.
The lowest piece was a dollar.
Okay, I was really asking that question to see if this, uh, event is in my price range. Before it shocked with the next one.
For the shot.
And it was so successful that people left asking when the next one was going to be. And we did have, um, one of, I, I've had a number of, uh, teen volunteers and their parent came, Katie, give her a sec, and she works at CCS. Um, yeah, and so she was very interested. Maybe she'll be a born number for the Friends next time we meet. Fingers crossed. So it, it went really well, and I think, like, beyond our wildest expectations. Well, we had about forty paying customers, I think. And they were really, really happy. Everybody, most everybody had a good time. A couple of people didn't, but they came alone. It was a Friends event.
I really wanted to come, but my son had dental surgery that day with anesthesia, so it stayed all well.
But maybe he could have used a little bit more anesthesia.
Oh, no.
So, so thank you to Gillian for doing that, and I'm worried to wear collab this summer. We do a garage sale. Yeah. And then the book sale was wildly successful. There's like nothing left, and we made almost six thousand dollars. We made almost three thousand dollars the first day, which was like almost as much as we made for the entirety of the October sale. So I think having it be, um, I thank you to Peter for moving stuff and bringing stuff down. Having it in the north part of the fiction browsing room was attractive, was attractive. Because nobody had to go upstairs or take the elevator, so.
Did you watch the book stock was the same weekend?
So that is an interesting subset to this because we did it right before book set, uh, book stock, and they had their opening on Sunday morning, and I think it actually, it's like a, a rising tide lifts all boats kind of thing, because people are like, oh, yeah, then I'm going to book stock on Sunday. And people then came back to the back sale and said, oh, I went to book stock on Sunday, and I saw Robert Heinlein first edition for two hundred dollars, and put it back, and I'm like, so, what am I doing? We need, we had competitive pricing. Um, Li Jun, uh, who's the head of acquisitions, I think is her title, right? She had some volunteers who were looking for some work to do, and so I had them price some of our donations, and oh my gosh, you guys, there's a first edition Arabian Nights that from nineteen thirty-eight that the lowest price through Book Finder, which does a compilation of different sites, is two hundred and eighty-four dollars. I know, I mean.
And we would have sold that before for how much?
I, I, I took the advice of Kim Hope, who's the treasurer at the, uh, Bloomfield Township Library Friends, and I did everything at about a quarter of its cost so that it could remain competitive, because I mean, if I get a little piece and somebody else gets a bigger piece, that's fine, everybody gets a piece, right? So it, it, it seems to attract much more interest in people who are really serious either about collecting or reselling, so I think that's, um, I think that's a market that we'll go for, and I think we'll have enough of that kind of thing, and the donations just keep coming, that we might have a July sale. And to be honest, the volunteers are super interested in, in doing that. There are, I mean, there's, there's like a, a, a four of people who attend, and they're like, okay, Stacy, I'm gonna go and do this, blah, 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 and I'm like, tap at it, you know, because here's your time to shine, and they, they upsell, and they just do an amazing job. So it was, it was a lot of fun, and I think, um, if we can replicate that success, it'll be good for us down the line. So that was, that's great. Thank you to everybody. Jim, who came and, and did a lot of work, and thanks for bringing the signs back, and. Don't want it stolen.
No, no, but two of the, the two signs that, at Farmington, I assume staff picked them up.
Oh, I hope so. I have.
I'm only giving you six signs back.
Okay.
Those two were gone.
I've, I've lost signs. We're down, we've got about eight signs. Did you get the one at the corner yet?
Yeah, there's.
I wasn't going out and standing around on purpose in this way today. Um, and then the gala is June seventh, and, uh, we're working on invitations and everything, and we're gonna get a sign for the branch this year, so that you can, so that, so that they don't feel like if they don't come to this one. So that's it. Any questions?
Any questions, Stacy? I don't have any. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the hard work. I hate I was out of town. I wanted to see both of these events, the book sale and the, uh, auction, uh, but since we'll have another one, uh, and another one, uh, I have another opportunity, so, thank you. That will bring us to the director's report. Kelly, I will turn it over to you.
Does anybody have any questions what I wrote? Because I'm gonna go off topic. I got other things. Um, I do want to say that the Book and Author Fest, though, the registration has ended, so. Um, and there is a waitlist.
Of course. Okay, we were talking about, uh, events kind of, uh, generating the energy off of one of them. I think this is one of those events. I know at the outset, there were some people who said, oh, is there a room to have a book festival in the midst of a festival, right, a longer festival, and what we found, I think, because I heard so many comments about how much people love this, and from authors who wanted to be in it but couldn't get in it.
Well, so now there's a waitlist to guess. I don't know what to say. I mean, there's only so much space, right? Um.
Same location?
Same, yes, same location. Uh, they wanted to bring it more into art on the brand, like more inside the walls of art on the ground, you know, where it's not locked off, but, um, they didn't get city approved. So, but, um, the city of Rachel Tinlin, who's person from the city of Farmington Hills, she would say to make sure it was on the map, so that people could find it that way, so we'll see if that happens. So it's usually on the, that little park by the Masonic temple. Yeah, so, I don't, I think, I don't know how many authors they got. I didn't hear that, but Sarah just sent out the email that it's closed, so if you get any questions. And you know, it's close until, because you have to pay a fee to be there, so they have so much time to pay a fee, and then if they don't, then they'll go down the waitlist to let more people in, kind of thing.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, just FYI, yeah, um. So some exciting news, and I just want to share this with you. So so and off, our graphic designer has her first picture book published as the illustrator. Yes, so she's official. I mean, it's a beautiful book. We have it on order. It's just not here yet, and when we were talking to her about it, we, uh, she was telling us that she used a lot of things from her home in the book, because that was her inspiration, like, you know, dishes, or, because she would look around her house, and, and she would just design that, so a lot of what her, she has in her house is and not that anybody would know, but it's very cute. Yeah, so we're lucky to have her. Um. First of all, I should have said this is very, very good. Now, this is very appreciative of the food that was delivered today from both the Friends and the board, and, uh.
Do we deliver on this same day?
Yeah, you know, maybe next year we can coordinate.
But you know, it was great, because there was so many options for, you know, everybody. They had fruits and vegetables.
Okay.
You had salad and lasagna, so you know, they were very appreciative. There's leftovers for tomorrow, so. Um, lots of comments about that. Um. Once again, this year I'm reading of the names at the Holocaust Museum. That's their annual thing. It's on May sixth. They're still slotted open. If anybody wants to sign up, I can send you the link to do that. Oh, both ways. Uh, you don't have to worry about. I can't see it, or no one listens to you anyway, so you're just going, thank goodness, right? But, um, it's very rewarding to do that, so it's a thirty-minute time slot. And you, uh, usually it's fifteen minutes. You're with somebody, so you're not reading the whole time for thirty minutes. It ends up to be about fifteen minutes every. You just switch pages, so it's fun. Um, and then speaking of, so Sue Ross is the person who sends this, and she's on multicultural, multiracial community council. And. Which she, oh, three houses. I know. So she, um, well, anyway, it transitions into, so MCMR is going through a little bit of a transition. So, um, the city of Farmington Hills is deciding whether they want to bring it under the umbrella of their boards and commissions where there's actually a.
Also, it's not currently?
No.
I get the impression that it was.
Well, kind of, but no, it's not. It's really weird. I'm not sure how to describe it. So basically, it was, a resolution was made by the city of Farmington, the city of Farmington Hills, and Park and Public Schools. And that was how this formed, and, and that's how it's always been. So now the city of Farmington Hills has decided, uh, whether they want to bring it under so that maybe more control. I don't know.
What exactly kind of group is this that we're talking about?
Multicultural, multiracial community council.
So the schools want to participate in that, the city wants to participate in that.
Well, they already do. They're the ones who made the resolution to have it. They just want to bring it more as what their other boards and commissions. Um, so last April, they took away the funding for that particular commission, so they haven't been funded. So.
See.
I don't know what's going on. I'm not privy to that. I just know that they're going under. It's, it's a little, it's a little.
It's a complex situation.
Yes, very, um, very complex, so.
Yeah, and all of the committees, uh, commissions, I think, see the budget cut, as we saw our treasurer there, uh, requesting funds.
Yeah.
At City Hall, Women Beautification Committee, um, so that's interesting, that.
Yes, so anyway, that's where we're at, that. Um, last week I met with, uh, Joe LaRusa. Um, he is, so currently mayor of Farmington, but he is a consultant who's working for Oakland County to do a digital equity project. You can comment. Um, a digital equity project, and so he wanted to meet, and so he is looking at, uh, who in Oakland County, where in Oakland County that you don't have, people don't have access to internet or whatever. And so it's a very interesting, very detailed report, but his, um, the goal is for Oakland County to be ninety percent accessibility, I guess. You know what I'm saying? That's their goal. And so most areas are, except for this one little pocket up in Oxford area. Um, but along with that, with that, when you get access, then how do you get people the devices who may not have the money to get their devices? So that's where he's looking at libraries to be, um, that place where they can come and get access, because they have a fund, a funding source that will provide the devices, and then we just give them out and all that kind of stuff. So he was looking for input on that. It was very interesting. So Farmington, there's like, there's not very many libraries in Oakland County where they're decided that, that he went by poverty level. It's a very conglutted, uh, thing, but he went by poverty level. Farmington Hills is one of them that would benefit from having devices available based on number of people in poverty level that may or not, may not be able to afford devices. Southfield was one. Rochester Hills was one. Bloomfield Township was one, believe it or not, right? Um, and I can't remember Pontiac, you know, Pontiac. But anyway, it was very interesting. So he was just looking for input on, okay, if we went to libraries, how would, how, what do you see as issues? And so I gave him some ideas and so, and put him in touch with the library network to get other Oakland County libraries, so we didn't have to piecemeal every Oakland County library. So anyway, it was an interesting conversation.
So when you're talking about devices there, are you talking about hotspots? Are you talking about devices like?
Their computer. Not Chromebook, because there are two. But, well, I didn't say that, but.
Oh, I know. I've watched our.
Well, right, and it, yeah.
I was thinking about why, sometimes, I mean, for what, uh, full laptop costs now, but you're saving on the Chromebook. You might as well buy the laptop, really future-proof it and make it, make sure you have a. But I mean, that's what you're talking about, and the place.
Yes, and, and would have the software loaded out of that, the typical software out of that, people would, would need. So it's, it's a great concept. We'll see how it goes. Any other questions for me?
That is very interesting. Um, I know we had a conversation. That topic around people did not have devices at the end of the last board meeting. Uh, I was asking that very question, so getting to know these work.
Yeah, you should see that, that has sprinted. Yeah, that's a lot of research.
Any questions for Kelly? Thank you very much. Uh, I see that we have two additional items. Regularly, Peter, you've weathered to talk to us about the lovely roofing of our buildings, which is very apropos for today's weather.
Yes, um, so the, the roofing is, both buildings are coming up on, um, what a lot of roofing contractors say, like, the life expectancy. They usually say a roof should, will last around twenty years. Um, we're a year overdue on this building, and, uh, the branch is two years. Uh, but we recently had our, um, semi-annual roofing inspection done in January, and they have given sections of our roofs, uh, letter grades. So right now, for, uh, this building, we have eight sections in total, and they have given six of them a D rating, which means we could have two to four years of, um, you know, solid roof left before we have to, have to replace it. Uh, for the branch, we have, all six of them are, six out of six is a letter D, so two to four years there. Um, they have provided options for replacing those, uh, sections, and they have priced it out, and I'm you know, as we, as we kind of go along, we've gone through the, the winter, and now there's rain here today, um, and I'm kind of recommending that we should start slowly chipping away at like this, uh, you know, getting these sections replaced. Uh, because right now here, those other two, we have a letter B, which I believe is eight to ten years. So we're not having to replace the entire roof of the building, but we do have to replace some. They priced it out for this building is two hundred and forty-four thousand for all six of the sections that needed to be fully replaced. And if the branch is a hundred thousand, in total, it would be, give or take, three hundred and forty-four thousand. Uh, but if we, you know, since they're saying we still have two to four years left, we could definitely break that up. And in those four years, have everything completed slowly out, so it'd be really give or take eighty-six thousand, you know, a year replacing sections.
It would cost more if we stretched the count, because prices rise. Or is this a locked-in figure?
Um, it wouldn't be a locked-in figure, but I don't see it changing dramatically, just because most of that is, uh, material that's, you know, very common to get. It's readily available. Uh, what does change is mostly time and labor. Um, they have to keep up with the times to, you know, pay their employees, do all the gas mileage, all that stuff.
So they are able to do one section.
Yes, uh, in the both roofing reports, they broke it down, um, in each section, they said, hey, this is what is, we're seeing is wrong, for this section only, this is this price. And then at the very end, they totaled all that up, saying if you were to do everything all at once, it'd be this, or one section.
So what sections do they say to start with?
They didn't say, uh, specifically which section to start with. Um, that one would just be up to us. They just kind of gave it overall grade, uh, saying, you know, these sections, as their entirety, are the worst sections.
But any of the D sections, I guess, for.
Yeah, yes.
There's a lot of flat roof here, so have they addressed the flatness and how the, whatever it is that's gonna keep it from caulking from coming apart like it has in the.
Yeah, so that would be, uh, part of the replacement. Um, like, over, over in this part of the building, it is all flat, so we could walk on it to get to the rooftop units. So they would replace, um, like, the layers of it, so it would make it, uh, more sturdy to walk on. They would replace the caulking throughout everything, so it doesn't, when it rains, it won't leak into the building.
We were to do the whole thing, what would be the timeline along with it?
Um. I think uh, I would have to reach out to them and talk to them further on that, but I don't, uh, I don't think it'd be years. I think they could do it in a year during the season. Because we don't have, um, like, looking at our pictures, this building would obviously be the, the more extensive one, since we have more angles and more square footage, but a lot of it is just, uh, roofing panels. We only have four, technically four sections that are flat roof that's, uh, walkable. Everything else is just the slanted, um, the metal sheeting.
Is it, is it tarred?
Yes.
We'll have a smell going on when we're doing that.
Well, speaking of materials, Peter, what are your insights on, um, materials? Are there any different materials available today that might offer, um, any, uh, energy efficiency advantages compared to what we have with some of your folks?
Um, that I would have to talk with them more. Um, I'm not, I'm not a, a huge expert on roofing materials. Yeah, so I can, uh, I can definitely. Yeah, so I can, uh, I can definitely talk with them more to see. You know, a better way to. Uh, line the roof so that way we can get either like cooler temperatures on the building or. Uh, just re- re- retain the heat that's already inside.
Yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile to ask the question, because as we look into the future, we think about our operating expenses. Utility costs is one that we don't have much control over, other than trying to mitigate, uh, against it in advance, so I'd be interested. Know there's something, some technology that might cost a little bit more, but could pay out in the long run, I'd just be interested to know.
Have we gotten any other bids or?
This is the only one, we are currently contracted with Royal Roofing, they do our semi-annual and most of our, uh. Actually, all of our roofing repairs has been called in. So. I'm still kind of new to the the process, I I. Thought it was my understanding that if we're contracted with them, we wouldn't have to bid out, but.
You can bid out. If it makes sense to bid out. Yes, absolutely, you should probably bid out just to see what you can get. But then you'd have to really trust the company that you're bidding out, this, this company is very familiar with our roofing issues, so that's the benefit.
Yeah, I think really it's about, um, expenditures over X threshold, right, we generally would put it out for. Um, I do agree though that there's a relationship and understanding of the type of service and the. The the trust factor with the contractor is very important, but I probably would suggest that.
Just to see what, what, whatever somebody else would claim. Can even give you just a little bit of the negotiation tool.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, whether to do it partial or full, would a difference be that if you decide to do the big improvements on it? And the millage is going to be a millage election in November, do you think? That the public would see, well, they seem to have enough money to fix the roof, you know, is is that an element? Of whether you space it out in terms of repair or get it all done at one time?
I think that's a good question, um, I think there will be people who might ask questions about our fund balance in general. Um, interesting conversations at the school board right now, they are also going through budget conversations and a person. You know, at the podium was asking about the fund balance. Um, and so I would expect us to get those questions. Part of the reason we maintain that, though, is to be able to, um, execute on the building projects, right, uh, when we need to. So I don't know, I think it might cause some questions, but I think it would be the same question, it's about the fund balance, will we have the funds to do this because of our. Uh, prudent financial management, so we don't have to continually come back to you for, uh, additional funds for building projects, right? Um, it's kind of the narrative that I would have on. But yeah, I do think it could cause some questions, but if we start this work this year, either way, construction would start, right? So people would see things going on, so I think that the observation would be the same, whether we decide to do it all this year, within a year, or if we space it out over four years. I don't know about. Um, so with that being said, um, I think.
I just want to say, the reason that Peter's here and for this discussion, it's just we are doing budget, so. Kind of want to know what money we, you either want to move from your capital fund? Or if you want us just to put it in building and improvement funds and. Have that, do you know what I'm saying, but you can also decide to do it. After the budget too, because you can move money and, well, I'm just saying, we just kind of need to.
Yeah, I think, I mean, my thought would be to plan to complete the entirety of the project based on the expenditure, um, that Peter's forecasting. I'd rather him have the flexibility to advance the project as needed versus having to come back to us, especially with some sections of the. So I think that would be my thought on it, I do think probably need to send it out to bid though, uh, and then. Have you come back, and I think that would remind anybody to bring it back to us in May.
Well, we probably won't have bits back.
Great.
But again, you can, we can move money anytime, so it's not, it's not depending on this budget, but we just want to say, if it was something that we didn't have.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I think you can use the estimates that we have for budgeting purposes, I think that's okay too, yeah.
I I think you have to put it out, it's a lot of money.
And we should be aiming to finish everything in two years, not not four years. Because if, even if they get, even if they're right about a grade of, you know, a roof lasting two to four years, it'll definitely only last two years.
And then there's a chance of, once you finish all these, you know, D levels, ones that we have that are B.
Yeah.
Okay, that's our plan for that. We did have roofing on there, but do you want to talk about LED lighting? Are you prepared or not?
Uh, so I did, um. When I first, uh, started in November, uh, November to December timeframe, I did, um, have. Contact with an old building services company that I used at my other job. And I had them come out just to kind of give me an estimate on, um. What it would be like to replace all the interior lighting with LED. Um, because as you walk through, we can see we have a lot of ballast problems, um, we've tried replacing the balls, but. It turns into something else when it's the ballast, you have to remove that and whole thing. So. With that, I did have them, uh, price it out, uh, because I know this is also something we want to do with. Uh, you know, a future master plan stuff that. Improve in the building, plus when you change the LED, it's more, uh, energy efficient, we're going to be started. We're going to start saving money on, uh, utility bills, because they use less power throughout. Add this up as I go along. So for. The upper level. And I believe this one is the branch, it'd be twenty-three thousand. Five hundred and sixty-two dollars to change, uh, these are all just. Like staff areas and the main walkway areas, so where patrons will be. Uh, not necessarily like small offices or, uh, conference rooms, those could be easily changed out by myself.
Except here at the branch.
Uh, this one's at the branch.
Actually, walk, walkway areas, this includes like shelving areas, I mean, all of the general public areas.
So this is, this is includes, um, like the overhead lighting for just general, uh, purpose, not necessarily if. Like a a shelf had lighting installed into it.
But the shelving areas of the general.
Yeah, okay.
And what was that price again?
Twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-two. I did have all these notes. Let me just add all this up for you, and I can just give you a total price.
Yeah, and if you want to, uh, Peter, I mean, we can. Cover this one, um, at another, uh, meeting as well, because I'm really interested for the trustees to understand, uh, the energy saving. Component of that, um, to really understand what the impact would be to us budget-wise. All the expenditures, so.
So, yeah, I can, I can come back with, uh, more numbers for the next one, uh, but pretty much. The overall benefit for change, having someone else come in and change our lighting to LED, uh, it would definitely make it easier. Um, because as I'm just really. One person, uh, because my team is not really savvy in electrical work, um, it would be all me doing it. And you would have to. Kind of bring in not the equipment we have, so these other companies will bring it in, like a a boom lift, articulating arm. And they're quicker at this, and then it will end up saving us in utility costs. And it would have fewer. I would say downtime, so like we wouldn't have lights be going out, um. Every area would be properly.
I have two questions. First is the lights that you're going to use, are those the ones where it's going to blindly?
No, so the lights would be essentially exactly the same as the ones we have now. Yep, so, um, the only difference in them is they just use less power to operate. Uh, but they'll have the same, uh, light color, so like we were to place those ones, it would be that warm. White light on it. And it, and it wouldn't. Also, it wouldn't like. Increase temperature, because I don't know if you ever like. Notice your lamp will get hot and like end up making your room hot, um. So with LEDs, it actually could make. The the rooms more bare, it would cool down, um, and it wouldn't use as much heat.
And the other, um, question. Just a comment really, because if we go with the master plan, there's going to be a lot of changes. So they're going to have different areas that are going to be for different things, so. If they're going to add things and take away things and whatnot, have you talked to? The architects about their ideas of what might occur, because you might be replacing lights that. You might not need it.
Uh, I haven't talked to them, um, from looking at the the plans during our last two review meetings. Uh, it doesn't look like. They're taking, the the areas that I want to have LEDs replaced into, they're not taking, um, out of, essentially. Uh, because like, if you think about it, it would be this main floor, um, in front of the patron service desk, the info desk. All that lighting is going to stay the same, they're not adding walls really in that sections or tearing down.
Moving desks.
Yeah, so this is just like, uh, like a normal light fixture like up here. Anything smaller, so if it was, we had like lighting like that where it's on a track or a stand lamp that's by a a desk. Those wouldn't be, those aren't included in this proposal, because those do have the potential of changing our new plans. That's a question.
Um, twenty-three thousand dollars, how long will it take for the energy savings to recoup that cost?
Uh, that one I'm going to have to look up. I don't see it being too long, um, but I don't have exact numbers.
I have a second question, completely different. We're talking about roofing and we're talking about lighting, which raises the question of. Have we thought about solar panels?
Uh, I mean, that is an option, I haven't thought about it, I was certainly myself, um. That is something we can definitely look at. Because we do, we, I mean, this area alone, we do receive a lot of sun. I'm not sure, so sure about the branch, if that would help, um, it is a smaller building.
Other trees.
Yeah. Definitely this one, I can definitely look into. Solar panels and how that would affect us and help us.
That that relate, that's related to Ernie's question too about roofing material, you know, anything we could do. That makes it look like we're forward-thinking, you know, City of Farmington Hills got a lot of credit for the way they built their new city hall. And that would be an interesting thing, you know, beyond just the, um. Beyond any savings we might. Enjoy, uh, from, you know, changing the energy source, um, just the idea, you know, the idea that. Yeah, yeah. The idea that it's. I think we would get, you know, it would bring in good, uh, it would gain us good attention from the community for, so we should look into that as much as we can. Those kinds of things, solar panels, the green roof materials.
But in any case, I would be particularly interested in time that it takes to recoup the cost of the LED conversion. In in energy saves.
Yeah, and as I look at, you know, if you're talking about any technology, solar, I definitely think you could get into that. But, um, it's a good mitigating factor to the uncertainty of rising utility costs, which budget-wise, you know, as we're going to see. The same millage that we get today, we're not asking for any more, any less. Um, but we do need to be looking at ways we can contain cost on our side, so very good comments. Alright, anything else for Peter? Okay, thank you, Peter, much appreciated, uh, and I think we'll look to see you probably, uh, next month. Alright, Sarah, you're up next for a conversation around.
Crystal, can you share? Thank you.
Digital signage. Let's have slides.
Yeah, I figured it would just be a little bit easier, so we have some on the.
That Peter, did you sort of figure for this negotiation?
Yes, um.
Oh, no, it's okay, I just.
Yeah, I have, uh, I have base numbers for, uh, both locations, they. When they made the quote, they didn't name all like branch location or whatever, they did, uh, north and south. So I had to figure out like, okay. And they broke it into two quotes for each building and upper.
Crystal comes, so she can shame. I'm the host?
Yeah, I think she might.
Here, does the quote include all the new bulbs?
Yes. They, uh, their quotes include, uh, removing all the fixtures or not fixtures, the. The ballast from it, uh, replacing it with the required amount of balls that go with that fixture.
And there's no different kind of wiring or anything?
Yep, all they do is, um, they remove the little, it's like a little black box, they remove that and then the wires that are already there. That are hard-wired into the building, they go directly into the fixture.
Okay, um, if I'm correct, everyone had already looked at the quote for this project, right, I mean, Kelly sent it out. Um, so this project was started by, uh, Donald, and I just kind of inherited it, because I was also working with. The vendor who had provided the quote for this sign. Just so you know, this is just kind of the visual of what the sign on the specific quote was looking at, I put. A different image up there, because I didn't like the image that they included on the quote for the sign. Um, but the digital signage for the sign would be on both sides, um, you can go to the next one, Crystal.
Where does the sign go?
Uh, so this monument sign would replace the front entrance sign at this location, so currently we just have a stone sign and it has our old logo on it. With Farmington Community Library.
And so Sarah, are we looking to like reuse the existing stone base or is it totally new s- new signage?
Uh, so they would remove the stone, uh, as a part of this.
Crystal? Did I think this through, did we? Could you go to the next one? I thought it would be easier than you taking out your own hose. Just go to the next one. Oh, it's switching, but it's like.
Oh, there we go. There we go.
Seems like a good idea.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, um, so when we had first, uh, started this project. This is just the main conversation that Kelly and Donald and I had about this project, so. Why do we want to get a new sign, uh, first of all, we want to make sure that our branding is up. Uh, first of all, we wanna make sure that our branding is updated because it is our old logo that is on the current sign out there. Uh, and we wanna have more visible recognition from the road. Um, additionally, marketing to twelve mile road traffic, uh, this would be if we go with the digital signage option. Um, if we don't go with the digital signage, we wouldn't really be using it for the purpose of marketing. Uh, it would simply be as marking for people who are driving by to see that we are the library. Uh, and then also to maintain the current signage standards that other businesses have in the community. Um, our current sign just looks a little bit outdated and doesn't really match the. Better branding that a lot of other businesses, uh, organizations have in the surrounding area now. You go to the next one.
I signal her, it's just.
It's okay. It's coming, it's just slow. Yeah. Well, okay, I'll go ahead and just talk. Okay, so project details, um, as you all saw on the quote, uh, the cost of. The signage that was sent out to you all was forty-one thousand five hundred. Um, Kelly has had conversations with Plant Moran, uh, there was a reason why for this specific project, we didn't put it out for bid. We did select, or we did solicit multiple quotes from four different companies. Uh, but because of, uh, Kelly can probably explain it a little bit better what exactly they said. Um, but we were able to, we would be able to move forward choosing this specific vendor without it going up to bid. Um, for this specific project and this quote, uh, this would also include the removal of the old sign and then the installation of the new one. Uh, and then the digital signage includes a five-year warranty for those pieces. Uh, there's also an estimated four hundred dollars for city permitting, uh, they don't know the final cost that that would be, but. Whatever the fee would be to make sure we have permitting for this signage. Uh, and then alongside of this, we would do, need to do a little bit of electrical work. This would not be with the signage company, but Peter had gotten a quote for. Uh, with the vendor that we work with for our electrical work for three thousand five hundred, which is what we would. Need to do in order to make sure we have enough electricity that would flow out to the digital signage. Um. And then just a couple of things that I wanted to note when it comes to. How we're having a conversation and making a decision about is this the best signage for the library? Um, for me personally, I think that we have few examples of well utilized or well designed digital signage in the city. Um, and uh, by that, I mean, I think that there are. We do have quite a few organizations that have digital signage in the area, but quite a few of them are ones that. I cannot read very well. Um, I don't necessarily think that the information that is shared is always. Worth the cost of what that signage would entail. Um, and so if we are gonna go forward with a digital sign, it was really important to me that we chose the design where. It was gonna be large enough so that whatever we put on the screen is going to be very visible for whoever is driving by. Or for the majority of people who are gonna be driving by. Um, and it's one that is really just like simple and clean, uh, and puts a good face for it for the library. Um, so I do think that this proposal, out of all of the ones that we did receive. Um, it definitely is the best digital design that we could go for if you wanna go with the digital option. Uh, especially based on our size limitation, we wouldn't go be able to go any larger than this in terms of what the city is going to allow for us. Um, and then when I say well utilized, um, what I meant by that is that. The library would be using this in the, in terms of best practices for what accessible signage is. So making sure that we have high contrast in the colors that we're using. That any text that is placed on the signage is going to be in a large enough font to make sure that it is meeting accessibility standards. And that we're using minimal graphics and, um, so all of that together will. Make sure that we're able to utilize it in the best way possible and it's not something that we spent a lot of money on. And then it's difficult for people to get the information that we really wanna make sure that they would have. Um, on a twelve mile road. A couple of other things, um. So, uh, one of the other things I noted, which I think is some of the signs in the area, so signs that are well designed, even if they are large enough. They might not be well utilized. Um, so, and I bring that up because I think that there are. A couple of examples that even I could mention in this conversation where I actually think it is a good sign design. It is large enough. Uh, but potentially the graphics are not being utilized in a way that is actually accessible for the majority of people who are on the road. Um, also, like all marketing platforms, um, so if we're talking about the digital aspect of the sign specifically. It might not be effective for a hundred percent of the people that are gonna be driving by this sign on the road. Um, it's the same in terms of social media versus print marketing. Um, social media is not reaching everyone and it's not accessible for a lot of people as well because they don't use technology as much. Doesn't mean we're not gonna do it. It just means I have to figure out how are we balancing out all of the ways that we're putting communication out there to make sure as many people are reached as possible. Um, so definitely, um, one critique that you could bring up about digital signage is that. Not the entirety of the population is gonna have an ease of being able to read it. Um, so I think the conversation should be, alright, are we making sure that this signage would be able to reach as many people as possible on the road? Based on the design of it and how we utilize it, and then do we think that that is worth what the cost of it would be? Um, in order to effectively communicate what we want to with this sign. Um. Uh, and then lastly, uh, I was just gonna bring up, um. At least in terms of the conversations that Kelly and I have had, I think. We're kind of in agreement that we definitely need a new sign, uh, so I think the conversation is down to, do we want signage that serves. As a location marker and also adds marketing value, um, or do we want signage that just serves as a location marker?
Alright. Well, um. I'll get to your questions in a minute. I just wanna say one thing, um, that this one is near and dear to my heart because like Sarah, I hate bad signage as well. And as this conversation came up previously. I guess that was my only general guidance was that, um, we we are very thoughtful as you all always are. About what we would consider, um, and what we would would want the sign to to look like. Personally agree, and from a branding perspective, we've done quite the job of, I think, um. Propagating the new branding out there, um, and so I even notice it myself now when I ride by, I'm like, oh, that's the old logo. Or like also when you log into Hoopla, the old logo shows. Um, it says provided by Farmington Community Library. Go like. So to, from that perspective, um, generally I support. Assignage that's aligned with our current branding, so I think this makes sense. Um, like you guys, I am concerned about, um, the readability of the size, all of that. Um, you mentioned Sarah about size limitations and that. This design, the proposed design is within the current max allowed, so I'm assuming. Unless a special permit was granted, that this would be on par with the signage at OCC then. Because that seems to be the largest one I see in town, so I don't know if you, how that compares.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I don't, I don't know all of the limitations themselves. I just know it was communicated about this specific signage. Um, I do know that this company and Donald have mentioned that it does vary based on what road you're at. And then also what other signage and, um, businesses are in the area and signage that they have as well. Um, I don't believe that we were able to get a sign as large as OCC. I think OCC is as larger than this.
I feel like that's the only one I can read.
I sent it as an example to Donald, cause I really liked theirs.
I would say the only, I don't know how you feel about, but uh, player barn. In a town twelve mile, I would say that would be the next one, like certainly not the schools.
No.
Yeah.
North.
You know, Donald wanted to go to the schools and I was like, no, Donald. Uh, so this is actually the same exact design as the new signage that the city of Farmington Hills put up at city hall and at Heritage Park. And one other location I think they had mentioned as well. So if you all have driven down Orchard, um, and passed by the signage for the city hall. Um, that is the exact same signage design that will be put up.
So that'd be.
Or that is.
Excellent, Captain. Um, okay, that's perfect. Are they, okay, what I love best about what you're saying is that. It's the content too, like, like you wanna sign that, or at least I sent you one, you're in favor of having a digital sign. That makes sense, and that's, that's, yeah, well, yeah, anyway. Uh, history of working at an organization where we're not even utilizing the signs, right, so. If, but I don't, okay, if we had that sign that the city has, I don't. Yeah, I was gonna say that. It's not my favorite, like, like, how do you feel about that sign? Could you make it work?
You know, I'll have to go and like watch through kind of the entire screen show of what graphics that they have up. Um, I mean, if if, um, the very first image that I had up there, there, I mean, it's quite literally just black and white. Even if we were to be able to put text up like this, my assumption is they probably have a lot more colors going on. Maybe like graphics behind what their text is, things like that, sticking to really deeper colors and having high contrast is gonna be the best. And so I can't say for sure whether or not they are following that and the issue is truly just with the sign. Um, but based on.
An issue.
Yeah, yeah, and so it definitely is, you you need to have both of those things. Uh, I mean, even like the players barn sign, it really throws me off with all the colors.
I just meant the size.
Yeah, yeah, no, the sign, the the sign that that sign is real great, uh.
Yeah.
It it's definitely, you you have to be pretty simple in terms of the colors and the the graphics and. Boldness of the text.
I have a very hard time reading the city hall sign. It is quite close to the road. This one is not gonna be as close to it. And I think that size is too small, personally. Um, also, I'm not sure if we need to have it double sided because you have. A lot of traffic going one way, and if I can't even read the sign that I'm riding next to, how am I going to be able to read it from the other side? If it's, you know, flat against the road like that, I think it would be more visible for both.
Okay, so it would be like, I think, uh, maybe it has a sign that's parallel to the road, maybe. If if what you're suggesting, Kathy, I don't know how that.
Yeah, rather than perpendicular.
I kinda like their sign personally. It doesn't have the most display area, but as far as a design, it's kinda clean, low profile. Which I think matches our building design, you know, I like the design elements of the sign.
Yeah.
Of their particular site.
Is that, yes.
Yes, yeah.
I'm also curious about the brickwork. I think that the it's the reddish or the pinkish kind of throws me off a little bit. I'm wondering if it could be more in the grays because depending on what colors you're going to be using, it could really clash with. The brickwork.
I would say, I think, um, I was probably expecting either, this is probably silly, but I thought maybe we might even be reusing the existing base. Or something that would kinda match that neutral color palette, um, at least, rather than, um, kind of a brickwork pattern, you know, they have that on. But I think that that kind of lends itself to this conversation around. Site planning and some design and aesthetic standards, right? Um, which I think that came up when we were discussing, um, the memorial benches before. Um, and as we are going into the master planning activities too. I I do think there's a need to have some standards around what we want the place to look like, you know, uh, aesthetically. Uh, and I think the city is trying to do some work in that regard now, even to the degree of, you know. How many lumens the the light fixture is gonna give off in a particular parking lot versus another, that type of thing. So, um, so yeah, I think I would want it to match the building exterior as much as possible. It's probably my guy that's on that.
It could be have, if you're going to use that kind of ledge rock, you could have some of the grays and some of it. Um, maybe a little darker gray, lighter different grays and, um, maybe. Like darker whites and, you know, I'm saying, but that color, I think that takes.
I would rather see a sign that blends with the building and is a fixed sign. Without trying to squeeze in the electronic words that people can't read. So you can only put a couple of words that people driving by can see while they're driving. So I don't, are you gonna pay extra money to get the electronic, to have more electric, electric cost to run the sign every year? And why just have a nice monument sign that blends with the building, has your logo on it and try not to tell people what's going on? Crammed into the sign that's not very big. Um, because if you use more than five or six words off to drive at the city, you can't read all that as you're driving and doing other things. You, it's better to have a very attractive sign that blends the building and it doesn't cost us more in, to run the digital signage. It's just a, an idea.
Uh, maybe it showcases the website. I do think, I'm I'm kinda curious, I mean, I don't have. As Sarah pointed out, this is a, an opportunity, right? It'd be real estate that we could utilize to market programming. To drive traffic to the library, to highlight, you know, things that we wanna highlight, so I do think it offers that opportunity. Um, I think my guttural instinct from a design perspective is that I personally might prefer. Something along the lines of what Sharon, um, indicated, and I'm not sure that we had, that we need a digital sign. But I really would look to you guys to advise us on that part.
I think that we're stuck on such bad signage. That we don't know because there's a lot of bad signage in the area, so we don't know what good signage would look like. And I think that's part of the problem.
Um, it is, cause I do feel like the OCC sign does both. I feel like it is a substantial monument sign. And it is that classic timeless look, but it is also very readable.
Yes.
Yeah, and so it 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 kinda does both things.
And I, and I guess I also think that, well, and I also think that looking at a picture of it doesn't give you the visual. Of what it would look like out of that.
Well, I'm definitely gonna pay attention to city hall signage like closely now and look at that to to get a good feel. I would advise that we all do that, us, I mean, that's the point of reference for the proposal on the table, at least.
I mean, look at what they're, they're like putting on there, like how complex. Eluded is their message, so if it's just something simple like AAPI Celebration May fourth, twelve to four, that's not a lot of information. But are they trying to cram in a graphic along with, you know?
We're gonna kinda ignore whatever they have on there, knowing that we'll be, like, we'll be conscious about that, but we're just looking at the sizing side.
Yeah.
I think we just say come in.
It's impossible to to research the OCC's inside.
Well, yeah, but so we can't have that size side because it, remember, it's the different size of the road. That's, we can't have that size side, cause you're on twelve mile road, which is a busy road and.
How big a sign can we have?
The one that we have. The one that you're.
How big is that sign?
I don't know.
This is the size that city hall has, because Sarah currently.
It it would be, uh, like what, roughly six foot, maybe a little bit more.
Six five?
Uh, it's, but I think it's about six foot wide is, is what the signage that's proposed is.
Uh, so it looks like it's six, little over six foot tall.
Uh huh.
Um, little over six foot, like long, like the actual display.
Okay.
With. Two, two feet wide? But like in between the two displays.
Six by six by two, so when we're looking around, we can measure in our heads.
Right. If I may. I guess, so when I worked at Salem South Line District Library, um, you know, in the country, Bill Nowhere, right by, um. It's right at a quarter of eight mile, and we were right by a stop sign, uh, stoplight and, um. Traffic would back up there, you know, as people were waiting their turn, just kinda like how they do at twelve mile. So people would sit in traffic and look at our sign. And anytime we had a program that wasn't doing well signup wise or. Libby stats were down or hoopla stats were down, once we put that on the sign, that shot up. Like, people read the sign, and I was totally skeptical about that when I started working there. Cause I never worked at a library that had a sign out there. But after a few years, like, I trust in the ability of the sign to bring the people in. Now, I totally. Think we need a digital sign because this was the old fashioned sign where you had to put like the individual letters up. And then like three times a year, the high school teens would break into it and then write lewd things. Rearrange the letters and then before we opened, I'd have to go and rearrange the back. So. Not everybody's gonna be able to read a digital sign, but even if fifty percent of the people who go past the sign can read that sign. You're still gonna get people who come in and. You're still gonna get people who come in and the messages that we had on it were like free ebooks with the hoopla app. Or like. You know, after hours movie, six o'clock. Register, whatever. I mean, you can have a really simple message. So I'm a firm believer in having a sign with a message. Um, and we have people now asking us where the library is because they don't even see the monument sign. I tell them it's by the post office. So I think if nothing else, we, we can tell them, we have a, we have a digital sign now. That'll at least be a better marker that, that it comes in. Um, so that's just my two cents. I, I believe in the power of signs. Well, flashing lights.
Yeah. And I, I think we have. Sarah who's very clever and know not to cram too much information on.
Yeah, right. And so we're trusting in Sarah because we understand.
Sarah leaves.
Right, then we're separate.
It's a cross. Well, I'm sure there'll probably be some standards around what goes on the sign and whenever she.
Right.
I'm sure she believes one.
Now, one thing that I could try to work out is when Donald and I were trying to decide if this digital signage would be a good option. The company brought out a truck that was able to pull up the signage itself so that we could see the different resolution options. Um, so I can reach out to the vendor and ask them if it would be possible for them to come to the next board meeting. I guess that would be at Farmington if we're switching over.
No, it's a heavy install, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. It's my. Um, so I could see if they would be available. During the board meeting next month so that. I, we could actually, I, I would imagine they could put up some graphics that I put together and then we could just see that as an example in person rather than.
That's a great idea.
Yes.
One seat.
They're like.
Which in the meantime, look at science.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be.
So I have a question, uh, speaking of Farmington. Um, last month when we were at Farmington. Maria Taylor and her friend were there. I, I mentioned that, um. That library doesn't really have signs. So you have State Street coming in and you have Liberty and. It's coming off Farmington, which is a high traffic road and Grand River, which is a high traffic road. But there's no sign that says library here. And I suggest that we should do that.
Um, so I know that Donald had had. Several conversations about that as well. Sorry, I don't mean to like keep it. And Donald, you know, we got Peter here. That's the one who is working on this project. Um, and I, I wanna say what we, the only thing we would really have been able to do since none of that property on, on the corner street. Is ours would be to have the signage kind of like what we have where it's just the state of the ground with like a post office and library.
Yeah.
Listed on that. Um, so. You know, I just say I would agree that's an option, but that would also probably be a, a Peter and city hall discussion, I would imagine.
But, but. On Grand River, that city hall, those people are friends. They'll be favorable. On the corner at Farmington, that's. Jill's, Jill's drugs.
Genuine care parks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so I don't know if she'd be agreeable, but I suspect that the city hall would be agreeable. To assign, and if, if we did, I would say. Not a green sign like a highway sign, s- some, something that, you know.
I'm grand with the city sign.
Well, you know, there is like on that city hall sign.
It's like, it says live.
Yeah.
It does. I'm just saying, it's just, no, they can't.
About people can't see this. You can't see that.
You can't, but it does say that.
Can't see it.
I think, um, you know, it, 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 I, I know what your point is, uh, Bob, we don't really have directions assigned to downtown. And maybe it's a conversation for like the DVA with the, the general signage, cuz there is a signage. Plan downtown for what that signage should look like, and maybe we should reach out to them to see if we could. Put something in place that would solution what they have, yeah.
I, I catch you. You know, what comes to mind and, and not necessarily as an example, but just as. You know, like, you see signs that have a finger. Library, something to that effect that people will say, hey, I see it, you know? A stone sign that says police.
Library fire, right? Police fire city hall.
I walk by there all the time. I don't even notice it.
Well, we have some little signs out here and, and I think they're sufficient. There's a blue sign that's about that big and it would be perfect. Pointing.
There's, there's.
Yeah.
I have confidence that Sarah will solve it all.
Now, Sarah, I have one more question for you. Uh, I love the idea of having the Simon to come out and show us kind of live in person. I think that would be helpful for all of us. The other question I have for you is whether or not they, uh, had samples for the different, uh. The rock, it looks like it's what they're using for the base material. Like, do they have examples of what's available or is this kind of it or how does that work?
Uh, I, I would assume that since we're paying that money, they would, they would bring out some other types of stone. Um, to give us those options. So I did not personally look at any options. It was just kind of the design that was sent to us and I just figured out what our branding would look like on top of it. But when I request that they come out and show the displays, I'll see if they can send along. Um, if not bring out samples, then at least send along some different options that they have for different color schemes. Cause I do agree, I think we could do even something like they sent along, but if it was in more grays or more colors that matched the. Design of the building, that would be a good route to go with.
Can we get a design? It's. If that goes.
So, um, in the concept of it, I'm not opposed to it, um, so I can definitely ask them. I don't know if there is. The only thing I could potentially think of is maybe. Because of the fact that the foundation is already built in there. I don't know if the bottom foundation, if anything has happened with that. Um, it's definitely not my forte, but I will ask them if that's an option, um, and seeing that that's something that we were wanting to look at.
So double sided.
Yes. Yeah. And you know, I will say, um, and I told Kelly this earlier today, like. This is not a hill that I'm gonna personally die on if, if we think that additional signage is. Not the route we wanna go, if we think it's not worth the amount of money that we're gonna put into it. Um, you know, I don't think that the library is gonna suddenly drop in its success rates because we don't have a digital signage. Um, but I think if. That money is not competing with something else that we would spend it on, I do think that there are benefits to it, especially with the amount of traffic that goes on twelve mile roads. So, um, I agree with what Jill has stated that. Uh, it might not reach a hundred percent of the people that are driving down the road, but if it reaches even forty percent of those people, I still think that. That's a significant benefit to having digital signage.
I have thought on the platform particular. I like the, the idea of perpendicular to the road. For the reason that. If you're driving and you've got two seconds to take your eye off the road, your line of sight will go here. If you have to look. That's a different thing. And, and that's a distraction. So, so if it's in a line of sight or just off, I can still keep my eye on the road. But I don't have to crane my neck and run into the bumper ahead of me. Just to talk.
We definitely wanna, don't wanna. For our sign being the cause of an accident.
Yeah, leave my part out there, by the way.
Yeah, so I'll pass along others comments and see if we can get some feedback.
You know, as far as the, um. Viability of the sign, I think you and Jill have convinced me. I definitely trust you guys on that. Um, and I trust that you have compelling content that makes it make sense. So, um. I think we just didn't want to make sure we have the right sign. So, yeah, appreciate you guys. Look forward to that next meeting.
Uh, just clarification, the reason why we don't have to go out to bid for this, even though it's over fifteen thousand threshold. Plus, we did get three to four quotes already, but it's because it's such a specialized thing that you don't have to go out and bid for that if you feel that. There's some company that is better than the other. So that's what Plant Moran said. Also, for the funding for this, this is. Leftover AMH money. We, so it's kind of already built in there because we used. There was a hundred and nine thousand dollars left over. So. We use part of that for the pickup locker. There's still fifty thousand something for a sign that we could use without. Ripping into any savings or capital out there. A step one.
Um, and the automated interior handling project, another specialized vendor situation.
Yeah.
Um, so appreciate you.
Well, we went out for a bit.
We did.
We did. Only one bit.
It, it's.
Right. Right.
But, uh.
But so, yeah. Yes.
I just to clarify, does that mean that this project would need to be contracted for the end of this fiscal year?
No, we were just put, moved the money, we just keep the money in the account.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Sarah, Kelly, Jill?
Thank you, Sarah and Peter.
Yeah.
Very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Um, all right. That will take us to unfinished business. And in unfinished business, we have added an agenda item from Michigan class. Okay, I think I've turned toward the lead.
Definitely. Lot of numbers I'm gonna throw past. I, when, uh, in Michigan class, I created four subaccounts, uh, FCL Millage, FCL Endowment Fund. FCL Endowment Fund dash restricted. And LSCA, and that's Library Services and Construction Act. LSCA, our federal monies that we receive for improving library services and undertaking construction projects. On April first, as I told you the last meeting, I wire transferred four million dollars from our Camerica Millage Money Market Account. Into our Michigan Class. FCL Millage Subaccount. On April first, in our fidelity account, I also placed a sell order. On our FDRXX and our FGOBX funds worth. Five hundred seventy seven thousand, six hundred thirty three dollars and eighty eight cents. So due to market fluctuations, we lost three hundred ninety nine dollars and thirty five cents during those sell transaction. On April third, I wired. I wire transferred five hundred seventy seven dollars, uh, and. Five hundred seventy seven thousand, two hundred thirty four dollars and fifty three cents into our Michigan Class. FCL Endowment Fund Subaccount. And then I transferred a hundred thousand of that subaccount into our FCL Endowment Dash. Restricted subaccount. And then I closed our fidelity. So that hundred dollars. Has been restrict, restricted by the person who gave it to the library to be used only at the Farmington Library. And it's always been combined with the other endowment account, and I wanted to get it separated, so it's easier to keep track of it. So as of today. Um, our FCL Millage Subaccount has earned. Five thousand nine hundred dollars and eleven cents. And if I combine the interest for all of those subaccounts, that's six thousand five hundred eighty one dollars and eleven cents. And that's in eleven days. I'm so excited.
And the interest is created to daily.
Yes.
Yeah.
So. Because each subaccount earns its own interest. Because it's divided. Plant Moran wants to know if we want to keep the interest in a restricted endowment fund separate. From the regular endowment fund or combine it. If we do keep it separate, this will keep the restricted funds interest restricted going forward. So it'll stay with that account. And that'll change the way the audit reports this information, cause they've always combined. I don't think that's a big deal. Um, so our month-to-date interest on the FCL Endowment Fund is five hundred seventy seven dollars and eighty cents. And the FCL Endowment Fund Dash Restricted as of today is a hundred and three dollars. So, um, the question is, should we keep the interest from the endowment fund separate from the endowment fund restricted, or should we combine it? And we had a little short meeting with the finance committee and we proposed to keep the interest separate.
Obvious question from a, a layperson. Is, uh, we're, we're not obligated to keep it separate cuz I thought, I would have thought we would have had to keep the interest separate. Well, and you know, Jim, I think. From a giving standards perspective, I, I think that's why we all agreed it would be separate because if I gave. Hundred thousand dollars for this purpose, I would expect the earnings earned on that money to kinda stay with that as well. Is what I would expect if it's in an endowment for that purpose. Yeah.
But because that the endowment fund and the restricted, um, fund have always been combined. There was, there was no division in between. The money was always together. That's why the interest was always.
So I understand what you're doing. Yeah, you spelled this out very clearly, Ken. Thank you.
So, um, do, do you have any? You have anything to say? I mean, do you all think it should be separate?
If, if the restricted account's interest is separate, are you allowed to spend the interest non-restrictive?
No, 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 it would be restricted.
So.
So, I think having the full flexibility possible is a better option.
Keep them separate, keep. I agree.
Cool.
If you know you can't spend.
And spend it on farming. I mean, we could do the roof. He could do the roof with that, so. So I'm just on farming.
I have another question. Are we all done with this one? Okay, the, uh, the name of the FCL Millage account, that refers to. Uh, tax dollars going into that account, that doesn't have anything to do with.
No, that's for the city. It's to put the mill.
Right. In other words, that doesn't have anything to do with our camp mill, camp, yeah, okay. Okay, that's what I wanna make sure, okay, yeah.
It's just those monies that were sitting in the M- Millage Money Market Account that are getting as much.
Okay.
That's six hundred, right? You said that it's earned so far and then.
Oh, which, which one in the, in diamond fund?
Combined, I guess. I'm trying to understand what the comparison is, if you know, from the fidelity, like what we were. We would have been fidelity if it had.
I can still.
Or not, well. So, um, this use, this is five point five percent interest and I believe the fidelity was four point eight.
Okay.
So it's, it's quite a good now.
Let me ask a question about that, Kathy, now, because was it four point eight? Because I think I recall seeing our Camerica statement's like two point seven.
Oh, the Camerica.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was like.
Okay, but most of the monies that were moved were from the Camerica Millage Account, which was earning like two point seven two. So this is almost double, yeah. So a pretty significant move, Kathy. I know you went through a lot of fire to get it done, so.
Good job.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much for sharing and, um. That will take us to subcommittee updates. Do we have anything else from the finance committee?
No, that's not.
What's the standard?
Yeah, well, I don't have anything else to say.
All right, well, thank you. And that will take us to the personnel committee, so, um.
I give you.
You did not communicate.
I did, under you, no, under your pile of paper.
Language.
I did.
You didn't.
I did, looked under your pile of paper.
Exclamations or refused, if they said.
You come on in. There.
Uh huh. Okay, I just thought of all this myself.
Yeah.
All right. Um, okay, so there was a personnel committee meeting. Uh, regarding recommendation for staff merit increases. Personnel committee recommends a merit increase of up to five percent effective July one, twenty twenty four. Um. So. The, uh, proposed budget includes a merit increase of five percent for everyone, that everyone will get the max. Posted budget. Also includes raising the minimum wage to thirteen dollars and three cents. It's been both rules. Must happen. Those below thirteen oh three will get, will only get this increase if the court makes that ruling. Including the above, the proposed budget only raises salary line by one percent and the total payroll expense by three percent. After completing the compensation study last year, staff wages were increased to just above minimum. So that they were not making the same as new staff just coming on. The opportunity for a five percent increase. Allows seasoned employees to put more distance. When the wages net of newer coworkers. So. We have a motion. Uh. To, uh. Increase. The, uh. Merit raise, uh. Personnel committee recommends, um. A merit increase of up to five percent effective July one, twenty twenty four, an ISO move.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that we would authorize merit increases up to five percent. Uh, effective July. Uh, effective July one twenty twenty four in accordance with. Uh, management. And your review processes. Any discussion?
You heard anything about the increase?
No, we're still waiting for the outsource or two time. Won't come till end of it.
Any discussion? Any highlights from the committee, um, from your discussion that you might want to share out? Or is it pretty straightforward? I feel like I've done this a few times now.
I I I did spend a lot of time. I wanted to just just right.
All right. Well, seeing no discussion, um, I appreciate the Personnel Committee's work in considering these matters. I know that those uh are never easy and that those are always interesting conversations. So thank you for your work on this. Um, I think we'll put it to a vote. Uh, all of those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Personnel Committee. All right, that takes us to master plan. So Kathy, I'll turn the floor over to you. Are we done? There is no other motion that. Gotcha. Okay, I was. Can you say what you said though about the minimum wage? I will say from a maintenance perspective, the scripting helps. Yes, yes. Okay. Okay, okay, sorry.
I know this is really hard to see. And I've taped it up here so you can all see it later before you. These are the three drafts that um the architects for the master plan have thought about for the branch. Um, and they were gonna present it to the Farmington City Council, but because. We haven't gone forward with our master plan per se, they want to wait on that. But I wanted you to see these so that you have something to think of. Okay, so. This one is the existing parking lot. A private mixed use. A parking structure and a combined city hall and library. This one here is the city hall. This is a parking structure, and this is the library. And the little things here show the different. Things that they're going to have uh and add it to the our library.
Kathy, that's our existing building.
Yeah, well. Yeah, our existing building here with the addition. And then an existing parking lot or a parking parking structure. This is a parking structure as is this. I like. This is um private mixed use with low-grade parking. This is the existing city hall and in addition to the city hall. And then this is the library with our additions and parking structure here. So this is just the three things they're proposing and um they're gonna propose it to, you know. Because of Farmingtons, uh, they wanna uh e-extend or or enlarge their area because it's. So, there are different ways. Have to say somebody that up there to even look at if you want.
So who owns the land that the parking structure on the right is supposed to?
I believe it's a city city.
So who would pay for this structure?
The city, city, yeah. We just go along for the ride.
That'd be good.
Putting a parking structure right here, like what, how do they? How does that how, how much bigger?
Well, they so they get a whole new building.
Uh, right, that's much taller.
Smaller.
It is a smaller footprint, yeah.
It's gonna be, you know, a two-story, but it could be multi-story. Yeah, they didn't elaborate on that.
Okay. And in that model, you mentioned the low-grade parking.
And this one down, this one here.
That's the third one, it's okay. Alright. Um, very interesting. Thank you for keeping us um up to date. Um. I know there might be some time sensitivity maybe from their side um to look at this. I don't know if you know Kelly what time.
I know they're chomping at the bit to show it to the city council, but I keep. No, put it under wraps, put it under wraps. And so.
Yeah, I I think the pleasure of our group at last meeting was that we probably wouldn't want to bring this back um. For discussion until post-millage sometime in the fall, maybe, um, was our thought. I think um Kelly has shared uh maybe a preliminary draft with me um that I might circulate with you all to take a look at. But I don't think we'll have that back to the meeting until post-millage. Especially unless there's a strong desire.
No, no, what I was gonna, I had a question. Uh, I already I already know that this is not popular, but. But this idea of combining city hall and the library on the basic library footprint. Would that give us any opportunity to make the the downtown library bigger?
Well, I don't know. It's hard to say.
I would think at that point, they'd have to like tear down that building.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at, and we'd be starting over. And and I know we would only gain space if we were going up higher, but that's what I'm saying. Is that an opportunity? Where we actually get, I I agree, I'm not in favor of combining with city hall. I'm not sure that's but the best, but but would we would we get an opportunity out of that to make the downtown branch bigger?
Well, you get an opportunity out of making it bigger by adding.
Couple additions, right, yeah. But we're still stuck with our existing.
Yeah, but it's 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 a lot of space.
Okay, what I'm getting out of that building is not new. You know what I mean? So so we we'd still be in a, I I would love having additions, but we'd still be stuck with a building where Peter is.
And Jim, I think what you're right, then it's a very good question. And I think that's what this board, that's our decision point. We have to weigh the cost benefit analysis to understand if a new building is what we should be doing for the future. Or if we should be making additions to the existing building. And I know in Farmington, there's a lot of sentiment around any change this way. As soon as the American Legion building or whatever came up for sale and it was announced that that building was gonna change. I saw the public comments about people felt very strongly that they didn't want anything else there. Even though the Legion's like, we want to sell our property. Rich, we need to do this.
So I think we should take over Masonic Temple, turn that into city hall. Everything in here and we build a magnificent library. That's what I think.
Why don't you Carnegie at the Masonic Temple and then bump out on the park?
Right, well. We are a coffee destination. I'm sure it's gonna be around.
And there's competition.
Okay, well, that's what I I realize there's a major conversation about.
You know, if you talk to. He will tell you that it's. The structure of the Liberty Street location is good.
Yeah, okay.
And it's more cost-effective to remodel and and do that than to put in a whole building.
I'll put it like this.
Paying completely for, right? If it's a combined city hall library, that's what I was getting at.
How you split those costs and then how you split electricity?
And one of the things that everybody in the library community seems to be clear on, Jim, as you alluded to. Is that they don't want a combined facility, and they're okay with a combined plan, but they don't like keep a separate facility.
No, I I agree that with everybody who said this is problematic. I was just wondering what opportunities that could be, you know?
Now, I see like you could have like that, and like, first, you know, the city's whole thing is about parking, right? To get more parking.
Right.
So they, but you could have like this little walkway between the two buildings if you so chose. I mean, that's not a big deal, but, you know. Skywalk, right?
Right, so something for us to think about over the summer. Um, I'll send the documents that uh were shared. Uh, so you can have some more reading on that, and other questions might come up and direct those to Kathy, because she's been on the committee. All right, thank you, Kathy. Okay, this will bring us to new business. And speaking of the city of Farmington, we got a note from uh Mayor LaRusa. About our minutes from uh previous meeting, February minutes, and we need to make an amendment. Um, I believe as it were, um. Trustee Doby was indicated as absent on the minutes. But she's referenced as having made a motion later in the minute. So I think it was just a snap flu or coffee thing. I think so.
Well, I wish I had the in front of me. Do you have it?
Maybe despite.
Because that's, you know, I've tried to note when when word members arrive. Um, I just want to make sure that that's what I. Anyway, I'll make the motion to amend the minutes, but I just want to make sure that's what happened.
He's got other moving parts. We have the person that takes the minutes and staff that like that's driving some of this. I was just glad to know people were reading our minutes.
Um. I'll look at it. Like, I don't wanna, I don't want to forget. Oh, have to wait while I'm. Oh, there it is. Okay. I'm checking to it. I'll I'll, so anyway, I'll move that we make the needed uh changes to the February minutes.
Alright, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Great, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, and then next we have uh an item relative to closing the Liberty Street location on Sunday, September fifteenth. For the library extravaganza, and I think we did this two years ago when we held the first extravaganza. So any um exp- expounding on that, Kelly?
Well, it's so that all staff can participate here at twelve mile.
And they're working.
And they're working. It's just that we need all staff on deck if it's gonna be like anything last time. There are over three thousand people. I'm hoping it'll be five thousand people this time. Uh, so yeah, we just need to uh have everybody on to participate.
Um, so I would entertain a motion to close the Liberty Street branch on Sunday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty four. More motion.
Oh, I thought you need some motion.
And a second, a second. Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Carries.
The expectation is that you will all be there. Reading, that's a table.
Well, I think that the um yes committee probably certainly will be out there. Oh, that's right. I might be across town today.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and I'm glad that we brought that up because um. Kelly, an action item for you and I to work on is guidance, village guidance for staff and trustees. And I did reach out to Mr. Bloom, our trusted counsel, for my own guidance, right? So he sent me some of the things.
Okay.
And uh maybe we can use that as a foundation to give staff guidance. So that they're not in a situation like Kathy relay where there was kind of. Guidance, it's just like, don't talk about it. Uh, so we'll take that in the next shot. All right, that brings us to correspondence. Any correspondence?
No.
Right. That brings us to public comment. Any public? Yes, public, Stacy. Oh, no, wait, state your name, your.
My name is Stacy Charlo. I live on Castle Meadow Drive in Farmington Hills and uh. I would like to direct comment as a member of the Friends Board. When it comes to the master plan, and I think that the Friends uh would like to have a little bit more involvement in how. That's going to um resolve as the architecture. Architects and the master plan become a a little bit more solidified. Because there are some strategic. Uh, placements that probably need to be considered.
Love to have their input, um, to be more trusted advisors. We have providing input, the better I feel about it, so.
And I would also like to add in regards to the signage that. I am not a super huge fan of digital signs, except when it's gray and rainy, and I saw the new sign on Eight Mile. Uh, in front of the hockey, the ice arena, and it was really, really uh obvious, right? It like glowed. And it was perpendicular to the road. Um, and I I do think that. In regards to what Sharon has said, I like to see things be stationary for a lot longer. I I do some highway driving over the course of the weekend. I'm sure you all do. And when those digital billboards change, they change so quickly that I can't even read the very few letters that are on there. So I think having something be a a little bit um more sedate might might help.
Can you set the time on how fast it changes?
I imagine it's digital, right? So, I am in favor of it as, uh, you know, somebody who lives in the community.
Yeah, say Friends Book Sale today.
I have to tell you that when Bloomfield Township puts out, it's really saggy looking now, but like plasticky sign. People flock, people flock. When I put out the yard signs and Jim put up the yard signs, people were like, oh, I saw your sign, so I came by today. So people are noticing this, and it's not like infinitely flashy, but it's pretty cute. Anything that you do is gonna be welcome. But I I do think that um moving with the times is also.
Yeah, I think once we get, we see it, you know, in real life, I think that'll bring us a lot of hope. It seems like we've all agreed. That's just, what does it look like? All right, any other public comment? I haven't seen none. Any trustee comment? Alright, see none? I think that will bring us to adjournment. We can consider ourselves adjourned at seven fifty.